Tennessee is the Carney family.
Nice to see you all. We're gonna have. Play the reasons after individuals for that home of science. The victims of the bombing now tragic. I was popular high school tragedy buzz accident they had. The sun. Which is sand one nation under God inducible for the between justice for all.
One minute away. Pretty exciting.
We're gonna start with a historical moment with historian.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tom Najerly. I'm the kind of historian along with our assistant historian June Van Der Scher. Along with the town's historical association, we develop flats that are displayed at our open interview being out on Van Geren Del Road between Bowser Road and. In Grazia Road. To show you what we do. This is the type of flat. That is on display. This is the number 12, number going up for the loving that we already have in place. Now, don't worry, we're not reading all this. We've got a substitute one that's ruined for it, but they represent citizens that helped make the town of Walker grow back from the 1700s all the way up until current. The one that we're gonna talk about tonight is already on the play out of the park. And that is for Samuel Tucker Randall, born in 1890 and died June 1962. His wife was Stella Hoyt Randall. Randall Airport was established in 1936. It was located on Airport Road in the town of Walker, like at the end of. Dawson Avenue and Short Road over in that neighborhood. World War Two finds Randall Airfield a perfect location for an operational lookout in Durverford. Volunteers were trained for round the clock observation of our airspace to identify U.S. planes and foreign planes and training was given by the military government. All right, let's switch places.
Okay, let's begin. Mrs. Ellis, Ellis and Bram and Mrs. Bayle. For the first two wins, he passed the Civil Aeronautics Administration test on October 27, 1947 to get their license for pilot. And see, and her husband Jim Brim were owners of the Maple trailer located out in Rockville, which is on 17M. It was normally the North Plank Road. It was North Street extension, but now 17. It's the intersection of Maple Grove that they did Carol Road where the new Stewart's is now being built. The Princeton's own star actual blade company and and the ubiquitous, which is being spread as the able Princeton lawnmower company. They also have a group airship with a hangar and a telephone beeping. And Grant their state was now Far Haven Drive and Randall Heights Drive.
Sam Randall was a major contractor who contributed to building a subdivision circa 1964. Giving a little coaching for the person called Presidential Estates. Also was the distributor for Piper and Beachcraft planes. 1951 National Alexander was the bookkeeper. 1953, he was also the CPA for Lloyd Shopping Center. Some of you folks might remember that one. At the time, even affiliate with Maxwell Ward CPA. Randall Airport became a class two field because it had two airstrips. One 2,700 foot long, the other 3,700 foot long. Oil pots and auto lights, that's hard, were used at the Randall Airport for nighttime landing. Flying for breakfast was the thing for local charities, for local charity. Breakfast was sold to folks who flew in for the fun of it. Different organization, folks from the area were welcomed and joined. Randall Airport was the first to receive government approval for a gliding school in 1957. Gliders were launched by name of an aero tow, auto tow and auto puller, which was a technology went to the bone. Since 1984, the airport has been owned and operated by Charlie Brody. Oh, there's also, there were two men who thought man could fly. Seemed outrageous at the time, they were right.
Thank you, Tom. As you can see, Tyler Walker has a rich history, but it's likely that you want to know. Next, we have minority whip, our town legislator, Mike Booth.
Evening, everybody. My name is Seth Manjuk. I've represented Lockfield 26 years, very proud. Last year and last year invited from county, I got included a special municipal grant program. And only the municipalities who worked with their legislature and submitted a submitted, submitted a 40, 40 grand would receive it. There was a lot of people involved in this and very proud to say that this is their first year that this grant is going to be awarded. And it'll be in this year's budget again, I'm hoping. Like she said, I'm in minority, so we'll have to see how that goes. But I'm hoping that we can do this again. So what I'm here to do is a presenting the supervisor with a check for $4,999. They submitted a proposal to safety issues in our town. And there's a lot of them. And by addressing them in different areas, especially the ignition one that I think. That little league part, I coached there for a long time. There's a lot, a lot of speeders there and the safety is a great point to all. So with this one in our $4,999, he's gonna buy some more speed bump and put him speed home. The place that they would help them or so.
Thank you to the county. Thank you to the county. Thank you to this year, but do appreciate it. It shows that when, you know, regardless of where you stand in the fight, you work together benefit of everyone, Tom, the residents. Great, thank you. Next, we're gonna start our representation and we don't sell a little time. So last three weeks ago, they had the permission to play projects on every, it is an annual thing. It's the goal of our. A young man, young lady won the game. Won it, you won it? So I've always said this, and it's important that these young people realize that other adults, us community leaders, just, you know, it's everything. We recognize the hard work because playing a team sport. And I had the opportunity to watch these young men and young ladies, period, this best week. Or they they wore it and I'm just telling you, it was great teamwork. It's great and they need to understand that we as adults, we see them. They're working hard and we appreciate it. The guys are working hard and we appreciate it. So they need to understand that and the way we do that, recognizing them, their hard work. So this past weekend, I had the pleasure of going to Melton High School and they started their Hall of Fame War of Fame, which was the first time. Thank you to Superintendent Amy Crean and the director of athletics, a big coach for inviting me. And it's phenomenal to recognize six athletes, I think it was. And it gives these young men and the young lady something to aspire for to probably be on that one future. Everyone that was on that wall, wow, what a resume. Great people, great they went. So back about 2011, 2012, I was the president of a military little league and we started the Hall of Fame. And in the Hall of Fame, we did the first year, five people who were played in the military little league in 1953. And one of those individuals sitting here today, and he got the school board. Mr. Green, will you stand up? This is the people I really want to give you to recognize at this point. A lot of people are out there doing the work. They don't want the recognition, but we need to recognize them as a community, as elected officials. But, you know, and I got a chance to be on mini T, the mini TV with Mr. Estrada and I had a good time watching the game and, you know, I always thought, you know, calling game would be easy, fun. Then I realized you don't have 50 players on both sides. You gotta remember everybody's playing, they're the scene. And Mr. Estrada, you did a fantastic job, thank you for having me here. Good job. He gave me my hand and wanted it, I mean. Right, so now we're gonna get up on time, boy, and we're gonna recognize you coming. So one of the things, you know, to recognize people, start from the top, lead from the top as a leader, that's what we do. Therefore, I, I want to start with recognizing the superintendent of large school districts in Middletown, Amy Crean. She's done a great job. And like I said, it starts, Miss, the director coaching here, that one for him. And then, you know, on a daily basis, the one that runs the show at the high school, Principal Lynette Williams. These young people, you know, they gotta be someone who deals with them on a daily basis. Me myself being a surprising high school actually many, many years ago. Head coach, I had to be surprisingly aggressive in high school. And my head coach was very important to me that to this day, my head coach still speaks to me. We hang out, talk, go away, all milestones we have shared over the last 30 plus years and it's great. So I think it's important to recognize gentleman that is in charge on a daily basis of this team. And that's head coach Tim Stridfeld.
Absolutely. All right, first of all, I want to thank everybody for having our guys here. It's a privilege to sort of get to coach your children every day. I'm very, very blessed. I guess a big thing today is National Sons Day. And actually, I was sitting in my car before we got here. I got up here a little early. But, I mean, I have a son at home, Jordan, I love him to death. He just turned 10 when we played Kingston. But so it was great to sort of see that. But as I'm posting the picture, I think to myself, wait a minute. I definitely have more than one son because I get to be with you guys every day. And it's just great. I mean, it's something that I enjoy, I love. They always talk about, oh, well, you could get money for this or get money for that. I mean, I would do this job for free and I would love every minute of it. The other thing that I really gotta send a shout out to is Mr. Grazia. He put together one of the greatest escorts that we've ever had coming home from. A couple of years back, when we won the sectional title, he did the same. We got off the exit and it was just amazing to see everybody, the community come together and it was just a beautiful thing. And then this year, I was just talking to him earlier, we had to wait a little bit, you know, to get all the buses together. So I was sitting in Port Dervis, Main Street, was a little tired, but once we got back and we saw the buses, it was incredible for these guys, the coaches got to see it. It was, it was just a perfect sort of mini pride type atmosphere and that's what it's all about. And hopefully in a couple of months, we can have another section. All right. All right, so I'm gonna introduce these guys. They come on up here, go one by one here. All right, we're gonna start with that. All right, first one is number zero, Gio Power. Gio has been a two-year captain for us and he plays wide receiver. Got a touchdown called back in the world game. In a Kingston game, but there's plenty more to come. Next one is number 10, Michael Tolbert. Michael is our, one of our running backs and our cornerback. He's done an incredible job and really has become a leader this year for everybody. Next is number 17, Elijah Jordan. Elijah is one of our wide receivers. He did catch a touchdown that was not called back. Next one is number 70, Ramir Bradley. Here is also a two-year captain for us. He is our vocal leader on field. I loved it possible to hear himself, Tom. Says are pretty amazing and I think a lot of people will be going away at what he said. Next is number 75, Stefan. Stefan actually is also another two-year captain. And in March, he had a surgery on the shoulder and was a little nervous. Actually told me, almost made me cry a little bit. He said that he might not be playing football this year, but luckily the shoulder came along and he's been crushing the opponents ever since. Number 75, Cameron White. We name fourth captain for all of our games and for this week coming up in Monroe game on Saturday at 1 o'clock. Cameron is our fourth captain. He's done a great job. He was our center of the last two years and he is one of those guys that you don't really hear his name a lot, which as a center, if you know, you don't want to hear that guy's name. Because if he's having bad staff, then you know about him, but he does a great job and he also has 102 GPA. Next, number 14, Jovan Ervin. Jovan plays one of our safeties. He does a great job, come a long way. And again, we're excited to have so many captains up here joining us. All right, next one, oh, he doesn't have a dirty helmet. All right, we got Damian Douglas. Shang and I, hey, guys, hi. Damian, believe it or not, is a freshman and last year he was playing modified football. And this year he's come up and really has taken charge. He's played in all three games so far and we believe that he is a very, very bright future. Eric Morello, come on down. Eric is a junior and he's come in and really done a great job. He played JV last year and really has come a long way, so we're looking forward to what he could do in his career also. All right, next one is Noah Rodriguez. Noah has done a great job over the offseason. He tried to get into our thousand pound club. He at the moment owes me a hundred dollars. Well, we got no or nothing for next spring. He is a junior, so he's coming back. He's done a great job as the O lineman. And if you didn't know, he had the permit, so everyone, he's gonna ask you about driving. Next one is number three, Joseph Royal. So some of you may have heard of Joe Joe's name. He is actually still in middle school. Joe is our starting quarterback. He is in eighth grade and he sort of became the first quarterback that I know who started four games last year at the seventh grader at the end of the year and has really put in a lot of work in the offseason and he has a very incredible future from it, so. Robin is one of our cornerback, the opposite of Mike and Lloyd. And he has come a very long way. We've had a lot of conversations during his junior year and I'm glad that they finally started sticking. He has gone through a crazy summer, but he is here now and yeah, very, very looking forward to what he gets. but he is here now and, uh, yeah, very, very, uh, looking forward to what he can do. Uh, Tyler, um, actually transferred out of Milltown last year. He came back. We're happy that he came back. Uh, he does a really good job. Uh, he played in the Goshen game a little bit. Then got his finger banged up a little bit in the Fort Dervis game, uh, but he's back now. So we're looking forward to what he can do for the rest of the year.
If we're at two minutes, we're gonna be off. Eric. Your picture, your video is on there.
We're about to start. We're just, we're gonna lose our internet in about, you know, less than a minute. Like, happen all the time.
Your, your videos. It's declared now. It's eight o'clock. It's gonna go out in two minutes. Yeah. I just don't want you to start, let them all leave.
I wish that happens.
You're back, you're back, you're back.
Okay. Trying. Okay, so it was only right to recognize these young men, I want to put it in terms of community service awards. And I'm gonna have Joe, that's Joe, they get away.
I want to thank these young people on behalf of book and ministry international. We have our annual giveaway every year and this year the goal was 2,000 book bags, 2,000 with the number. Everything we gave was 2,000. We came back with 250 book bags, but everything else went. And I got a phone call from the parents of these children and they said, uh, my kids want to volunteer for community service. I went on, here we go. But to my surprise and my delight, the work ethic, the, um, responsibility and maturity of them, and they were so serious about serving others, that I realized that they understood the assignment. So I'd like to recognize, um, two brothers. We'd like to have Jeffrey Palmer and Justin Palmer come up. Then we'd like to recognize Alan Price. And Alan, if you can be doing service. And then I'd like to recognize my neighbor's, uh, daughter, Samara Ditten, but she became my, uh, huh?
Dotton.
Dotton. We have Ditten here, so it's Dotton, whatever, we named it together. Me, she became my right hand. Twenty-five hours she put in. She will call me every day. What do you need? Don't do anything. I'm coming, I'm coming. And she was there. And to my surprise, she wouldn't let it go. So she's gonna come back every year. And I believe these young men will as well, but Samara, please come. Welcome to ministry in the town of Wall Hill. We want to thank you for your community service and your service to others and your commitment to be people of substance and value. Thank you.
This is all you. This is all you.
So don't worry, you can change yours to get it for the right spelling.
Or you can just change your name.
But thank you so much for your services.
Thank you guys.
So next, you know, we've always made it up to recognize our small businesses in Town of Wall Hill. They've been here for years and have been able to sustain this next business, which is the friends of Gray City MMA Academy. They've been here for 13 years and they've been able to sustain that just because of how they do things and have got people to go visit, speak to the owner and see how things are done. And it's fantastic to see our small business sustain and drive it down the wall here. So with that, we recognize Bernardo Canletti. Recognition power, everything we've been through the past.
Thank you so much, Eric. Thank you. Thank you, man. I'd like to say one, say it by ten, absolutely. I'd like to say thank you to George, Eric and Mark for their hard work, their dedication. I'm, I'm all the, I'm making Wall Hill as great as it is.
Yes.
It is an honor and a privilege and a blessing for me to be a part of this community and to give back in some small way and to help the youth and the adults and the police department. Um, have a place where they could come and put their, their coats down and, and, and be at peace and try to better themselves and, and, uh, just to give back to the community. That's what I'm all about. And I want to thank you guys very, very much for this great honor. And I can't say, I can't say no about these wonderful people. Thank you, guys. And Larry. Thank you, Larry.
If you haven't, if you haven't recognized the name, his family's been here for years. So, uh, they're from the appliance city, you know, the, so his father, his brother, that whole generation was here way before. So if you don't know the name, these, these are the people that when we first moved here, we would buy their appliances, our appliances for that.
This here makes me feel good this evening. Uh, you've, you know, it's good. You've got the leaders in our high school and our, um, school districts and our ministry and in the community zone. Now we're gonna start public participation on agenda item only. Three minutes. Um, come up, say your name and your address. We'll start with. Here in your audience.
Not that I'm Joe.
For the audience. As I said, we'll move on to correspondence. Um, sitting here for our town clerk is Deputy Town Clerk Mercedes.
One is for, uh, the Jewish Family Services. Address to Jewish supervisor Town of Wall Hill. Dear George, on behalf of Jewish Family Services of Originology, I want to thank you, your office, staff, the Town of Wall Hill legislators and the Boys and Girls Club for your kind of talent and voice. Our Kids Connect Summer Rescue Program during the last two weeks of August. George, from the moment you offered the circle pool park facilities for kids to connect this summer, they're stuck with other ways to ensure that J F S staff had everything needed to provide a comfortable and enjoyable experience for a special group of children that participate in this program. Your office and park staff make sure we have storage facilities and a market community and a beach around and aquatic supply station. Use of the towels was an unexpected extra perk that absolutely delighted the kids. You and your office also forged a partnership for us with the Boys and Girls Club who graciously opened all of their facilities to our program. As well as in the 10 or so years that Jewish Family Service has run this special summit program. Our time at Circleville Park was by far the loudest and most accommodating venue we have ever given us. Our kids and staff received a warm welcoming reception and that was thanks to your support for the program. Over the past few years, Jewish Family Service has enjoyed working with the Town of Wall Hill to grow our friendly visitors program. We are grateful to have your commitment to the community we serve through our evening charge. Very dear is yours, Janet Davis, President of the Jewish Family Services for the Dragons. There's a second letter from the Kiwanis, uh, Town of Wall Hill Supervisor George Serano. Address you, dear Supervisor Seran, on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of Milltown. I want to thank you for your support of our Black Hero Project. Allowing us to use the lights, chairs, podiums and tents. A given as assistance of the Department of Public Works was invaluable for project test and competition. The ceremony was wonderful and a very moving event which was enjoyable to everyone. Our guest speaker, Christian Carroll, Director of Orange County Development Services, quoted. This wrote in his speech, "The world is a nation that has long heroes, but for still is a nation that having hero kills to remember and homage." Lastly, thank you for helping us to honor the heroes in our community. We couldn't have done this without. Yours, Kiwanis Service, Verona Proctor.
Thank you. Um, just to add to that, uh, VPW, John Grasham, uh, thank you, uh, the Parks Department. It was collective effort by everyone in the town. Uh, the letters I addressed to me, thank you. It's a collective effort. I can't do this without, um, my employees who work in the town and do a great job day in and day out for investments as a town. Thank you. Move and pass on to the gentleman up there. Um, now we'll start with our resolutions. My pardon.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Wall Hill, authorizing with the National Public Works, the same proposal for purposes of negotiating an agreement for the management and operations of Forest Camp as well. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Town Board of Town of Wall Hill give out what rises and directs the town supervisor and commissioner of public works to enter into contract negotiations with Bankor Abatement Inc. to business as B A services for the management and operation of the Forest Camp ground. For the appropriate town officials, if the Town Board apprears for all contract developments and to execute all that is necessary to enter into the final negotiated contract subject to the approval of the county attorney.
Second.
Mister Point.
Yes, we're discussion. Who, anything?
Uh, just, uh, I'll just add, this, uh, this outfit currently runs the campground. Uh, they're just wrapping up, uh, five years of operations. Um, they've done a tremendous job. And, uh, they, uh, they submitted a very good proposal. So we look forward to going forward with that. Thank you.
Mister Point.
Yes.
Mister Valentine.
Yes.
Mister Marley.
Yes.
Mister Johnson, absent. Okay, our supervisor Seran.
Yes, just want to add to that. To visit the corner of this campground, we still have the up to be, to go up there and find a spot on a rock and just listen to the water. It is a beautiful campground that the town owns. Residents are just all there to have a, ride your bike, just walk. It is beautiful.
I think, Mr. Supervisor and Councilman Johnson, who's not here tonight. He mentioned we may do a little, um, work on the contract to make the park, uh, the campgrounds more accessible to town residents for the rental situation.
Yes.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolution of the Town Board of Town of Wall Hill, setting time of place for public hearing with respect to establishing the power of water and fuel rates for the fiscal year 2024. Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Wall Hill intends to schedule a public hearing on October 26th, 2023 at 7:25 PM. We respect the proposed change in the rates for water and sewer usage for properties within and outside the boundaries of town's water as sewer registers during the fiscal year 2024 as well. Water in district per rate $2.95 for a thousand dollars. The proposed rate, $3 per thousand dollars, which is setting base of 1.68%. Where out of district, $5.97 per thousand dollars, which is the current rate. The proposed relief of $6 per thousand dollars, which is an increase of $1.68%. Sewer in district, $3.15 for a thousand dollars, which is the current rate. Proposed rate of 320 for a thousand dollars, which is 1.57%. Sewer out of district, $6.30 for a thousand dollars, which is the current rate. Proposed rate, $6.40 for a thousand dollars, which is an increase of 1.57%. Construction, temporary water, $20 per thousand dollars. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that a public hearing should be held at its own work on October 26th, 2023 at 7:25 PM. We respect the proposed water and sewer rate changes for fiscal year 2024. And it is further resolved that its offer is hereby authorized according to your active force. Public orders of security between pass provide of all law.
So. Second, discussion. So for the residents', um, knowledge, we, we're looking to increase as we've done in prior years, um, by nickel. by nickel. So the current rate for our water is 2.95. The new proposed rate would go up to $3, an increase of a nickel. As well as the sewer, it's currently 3.15, it would go up 3.20. We've done this in the past, this is a continuous of prior practice. Years ago, we had a master plan, an engineer come in and speak to our water and sewer plant. And, and we forecasted the improvements that could possibly be needed and wanted in the near future. In that, we had to plan to have those funds available in case we had to do those improvements, whether it's an emergency or planned event. And so we don't want to get caught as our neighbors and other municipalities have, have been caught unprepared and unfunded for those emergencies and those improvements within waters or districts. So with this, with these continuous rates, we, we ensure that we can do those improvements, address any emergencies without impacting the taxpayer. I think, Mr. Gras, if you can correct me, what we looked at is we can increase at this rate for the next 10 years and we would still be in 10 years lower than what Middletown is currently. So it's still a very affordable rate and it's affordable to, to the residents of the town. And it's, it's forward-moving, planning and, and funding for these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Sirano?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of Town of Wall Hill, setting time of place for a public hearing with respect to a reading chapter 43, proclamant policy. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the public hearing will be held at the Town Board on October 26, 2023, 7:25 p.m. We will recite a reading chapter 43 of the Town Code as noted above and it's further resolved that the Town Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to force public notice of safe hearing to be given as provided by law.
So.
Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Sirano?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Wall Hill, authorizing the Supervisor to accept a date for the purchase of speed pumps. Now therefore, editing hereby resolved that the Town Board hereby authorizes and directs the Town of Wall Hill Supervisor or his district to accept the following bids for speed pumps. Three top products in the amount of $26,541.86. And it is further resolved that the Town Board hereby directs the Town Control to utilize American Rescue Plan and Top Fat, pay on local fiscal recovery funds to pay for this expenditure on account for the effort saved $26,541.86 allocation of budget line D H 5110 dash 411.
Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Supervisor Sirano?
Yes.
Town of Wall Hill Town Board. Resolution of the Town Board of the Town of Wall Hill, authorizing the implementation and funding of the cost of a transportation project, which may be eligible federal aid and or state aid or reimbursement from rich New York towns. Resolving the Supervisor of the Town of Wall Hill, he and in hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Town of Wall Hill, all necessary agreements, certifications or reimbursement requests for federal aid and or state aid to the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the answer or approval of the project and providing for the administration of the project. And the Town Board will fund the project costs on permanent funding of the local share of federal aid and state aid eligible budgets cost and all budget costs within applications therefore that are natural and will and it is further resolved that the certified copy of this resolution files in the State Commissioner of Transportation by attaching to any necessary agreement in connection with the project and it is further resolved. This was a wish you should take immediately.
So, yeah, this is the midway bridge for the certification.
Second. Discussion. So Lou, do we have an idea of what the balance could be on this?
The, the local share will be 8.66 and we receive a grant over 5.1 million. So it's a home maker attempt, absolutely.
Okay, because I was going to suggest whatever is not covered would be, could put it through the other ones as well. This will qualify.
Oh, no.
We don't, we don't have to.
Yeah.
We don't have to.
No, no, we should be in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, I, VPW, Michelle Baker, to get this grant. This is pretty much the work. It's right across.
Okay, Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Sirano?
Yes. Next, we're going to have Councilman Pluggins. We'll start with Councilman Meyer.
Thank you. I want to congratulate the Midi, Middletown Midi Bears on their win over four jerseys to bring back the Erie Bell. It was an amazing win. I did follow the procession home, which was awesome. And I'm proud of the Midi football team and coaches believe that this is going to be a very special year for them. So go Midi's, great job. On a personal note, having gone to the Middletown High School and Middletown School District myself, I was happy and proud that my daughter got to actually play in the bell game as a marching man. And then a week later, got to play at the San Gennaro Festival in New York City. School offers so many great things for these kids. And they are absolutely amazing, not only in their performance, but also in the way that they conduct themselves. So through all the administration, the teachers, the coaches, the students, keep up the amazing work. You guys make our community so proud. So thank you very much. This year, Middletown School District also honored their first Ball of Fame class. I was there for that. That was awesome. That was an amazing morning, on a Saturday morning to, to go to that. I want to congratulate Joe Rattaboy, Class of 63, Lois Ann Hayes, Class of 77, Stacy Morris, Class of 86, Tim Reynolds, Class of 89, and Michael Bealas, Class of 99, Mel Mosley, Class of 2011, as well as Coach Wolslayer, who I gotta say, I spent a lot of time with when I was in high school, having the fact that he was my gym teacher as well as my sports camp coach. So amazing things. It was a wonderful ceremony of, I'm proud that my daughter can attend a school rich in tradition and to follow the legacy forged by these wonderful individuals. So thanks for doing that. It's also Hispanic Heritage Month. In honor of Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month, the town will be having the salsa band, salsa band playing on Community Day this Saturday. So come out, should be a fun day for everybody. In addition to Community Day on Saturday, our State Senator James Stufus will also be holding the Resource Fair with a free barbecue in Erie Park in the city of Middletown. So there's a lot going on this weekend, and we also heard that there's a Midi game as well. Howells Fire Company Number One will be hosting a blood drive on October 3rd between 1:30 and 7:30 at Howells Firehouse located at 26 Elm Street in Howells. The blood drive is being held to celebrate life, the life of past Chief John Stevens. In addition, Middletown High School, as part of their cares program, will also be holding a blood drive on Tuesday, October 3rd. And I believe that's at the high school, correct? Excellent. Okay, let's say it's at the high school for now. On October 4th at 2:20 p.m., FEMA and the FCC plan to hold a nationwide test of the Emergency Alert System. Giving everybody notice about this now, so that they're aware that it's going to come. It is just a test. It'll be to all phones, TVs and radios. So just remember that it's just a test and don't panic. Mark your calendars that on October 27th, the town will be holding an annual trunk or treat here at Town Hall, 99 Power Drive between 1:00 and 6:00 p.m. And so all those who celebrate, I want to wish you a Happy New Year, but not totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Donovan. Well, I'm doing. We're going to know the meeting's going to be in Spanish. In honor of. I hope everyone understands.
Yes, sir. Thank you Supervisor, thank you Town Board, and thank you residents. For my police report, our staffing, the department currently has 54 full-time, full-time police officers. In the last two months, we hired nine police officers. Six of the officers are attending the police academy and will be graduating at the end of the year. One of the officers was reinstated after he had transferred to another agency a short time ago. Another officer was already certified after serving seven years with the NYPD. Lastly, the last of the nine is certified, is a certified officer transferred here from another agency. The importance of, of taking the officers that are already certified, they do some training with our officers. They don't have to go to the academy. They don't have to go through everything from soup to nuts. They've already trained, so it's just a matter of getting them on the ride through with our police officers and they get to hit the road right away. Arrest data to, to year, the date is up 12.6%, 639 for 2023 versus 567 for the year 2022. On October 5th, the Police Community Council will host a forum on the police response to cases involving those in having a mental health crisis. The chief will moderate and the participants will be among other Orange County District Attorney Dave Uglar, Orange County Commissioner of Social Services, Mental Health Commissioner Dossie Miller, and Laurie Artieri from Access to flexible living. For those of you that don't know, the supervisor working with the chief of police established a program with the town. We now have two full-time staff helping our police with mental health calls. So they're here, they have a car, they're paid and, and nothing is paid by the town. It's, it's all given to the town. So it's a big plus to the town. Again, it's two offices, two position, two agencies, two candidates with cars to help with mental health issues with calls I made. As we know, we're not trained for everything. Our police officers can't handle everything that is, is presented to them. And one of the biggest issues here has been in the past and continues across the country is medical health. And how do you deal with that? That's a very big plus and good luck with that. October 17th at 7:00 p.m., the Police Youth Coalition will be hosting an annual awards dinner ceremony with dinner as well as sip on juice, sip on juice and paint workshop. Thank you, Rosie. Our body cameras are fully operational now on the police officers. Accreditation update, the department is currently under its compliance period, which runs from September 1st through December 1st. Within the next two weeks, the department will undergo a mini audit. Then on December 5th, 6th and 7th, the auditors will conduct a full inspection of the department to ensure compliance with the 126 policies and 122 forms required under New York State accreditation standards. Congratulations to our team, including John Vezcoochi, Sergeant John Dan Ward, Lisa Castella, for all your hard work as well as achievements. Thank you, sir. From our parts, the, the biggest news we have there is if you remember, every year we open up the Little League and we have a parade starting at Stevens Avenue Park. In the past, that park had basketball courts that were functional. We always had problems with them, issues with them, and so we had to take them down, put them back up, take them down. Just recently, we converted those courts to pickleball courts. And so they've just recently been painted and they should be able to, to be used very shortly, the next couple of weeks. We're hoping to get a game and break the courts in with the board. And we'll see how long we last with that, but it's a great use. There's also a bathroom that's been built there. And that was all done with grant money, so thank you for that. And I would, I just want to wish all our youth that were here today, congratulations. It's amazing to see these kids and they're young men, they're not kids, to do what they're doing athletically and as you heard in academically as well. So keep them busy, keep them involved and we'll have great young citizens. I always say this, it's, this is from me. I, I look at these kids, I look at, at the ones that we present, the ones that, that Rosie works with in, in the youth coalition. And I always say, our kids, our youth, if you look at them, for me, it's God's way of saying there's still hope for those world. So, you know, let's keep our kids encouraged and, and protect them and encourage them of all we can do. A speedy recovery to our town clerk. And last but not least, thank you to our legislator, Mike Padu, for always supporting the town and always providing us with the funds we need to do the things that we do. Thank you.
Councilman Cohen, you have to say, extensionist, you said.
Okay, I'm done, guys.
It's supposed to be seen.
I see, yeah, yeah. All right, no. I'll start with highway. The Highway Department has completed the current paving list. Again, we spoke about that over the last couple of months. It is very lengthy. I'm going to get my hands on that list and I'll read it next week, just to give you an idea how much they actually accomplished, even though it pretty much rained since July. And they were still able to get this done. So we're going to begin to backfill dirt driveways, which are lower than the newly paved roads and put shoulders on roads that require it after we were paved. We'll begin our final roadside mowing, weed whacking and mowing of retention pods for 2023 season. This will take a few weeks to complete, so please be patient as we go around the town mowing. Along with the roadside mowing, we will be trimming trees and grading dirt roads for the winter. We, we, we will remove problem trees to reduce the chances of power outages during storms. Please understand that we cannot remove all trees, though. Trees that are within 10 feet of Orange Rockland's primary electric lines have to be removed or trimmed by Orange Rockland. All roads with centerlines and fod lines have been painted for the winter and we're now painting stop bars and turn arrows. As always, if you have any questions or concerns, you can call the Highway Department, 845-361-1106. Leave a message if you, if nobody picks up. Moving on to Veterans Affairs, Post 151 has a couple of events coming up on Saturday and Sunday. It's October 7th and 8th. Rain or shine, they're going to be having their Veterans Pow Out from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and that's $6 per person to enter. Also on Saturday, October 14th, a spaghetti dinner from 2:00 to 5:00, it's $14 a dinner. You can eat in or take out. Call Jeff for tickets. So this way they can determine how much food they actually have to purchase. Jeff can be reached at 845-590-1794. I guess we're having Community Day. It's been mentioned already. It's 12 to 5 on Saturday. Music, local vendors, entertainment, food trucks. I don't know if anyone's, if you're aware of the, or familiar with the Cousins Maine Lobster. It's a big hit. They have a following. And they're going to be there. They make fantastic food.
Correct you, they're not going to be there. Sorry.
But they don't?
They were not available.
Okay, okay, okay. So who can we, something I brag about then?
We'll have a lot of food.
A lot of food will be there. Okay, good enough. Trunk or treat's been mentioned as well. That's the Friday before Halloween. And I don't know if everyone's aware, here in the Town of Wall Hill, we've got five school districts. And we've got four county legislators. All the school districts are great. All the legislators are great. And I want to thank Mike Padu coming through once again with some money, coming back to town. It is tax dollars and if they don't come here, you're going to go somewhere else. So thank you again, Mike. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. So thank you again, Mike. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, one thing, some of the things I want to talk on is, so tomorrow, um, it's February, uh, September twenty ninth, we're gonna have, uh, the Mobile D M B is gonna be here right in front of our building. Uh, again, with our partnership with the Orange County Clerk, K S U, uh, the Mobile D M B is gonna be here tomorrow from ten to twelve and from one to three thirty. Um, they do all registration transactions, all license transactions, including reel and hands. And they also have the deforcing transaction. So come out, if you need to come out and do something with the D M B, I want to go a little bit of time, they'll be here tomorrow. Um, I just want to talk a little about Community Day. Um, it's a good day to, you know, showcase our community. Uh, town of Walkeville has become a very diverse, um, community and to really have this day, I mean, national Hispanic heritage, I'm from a fan out there. I hope to see people out there. Um, on the, you know, on the floor dancing some salsa. We're gonna play two sets. We're gonna have a sixty to seventy band, one square cake. Uh, we also have two dance groups that are gonna perform. They have thirty to forty vendors and fifteen, minimum fifteen food trucks and food stands. So, uh, the weather forecast will be a nice afternoon and I hope to see everyone out there. I'm looking forward to. Um. Election Day, so we agreed yesterday, Town Board, that on Election Day, our dollar bus, anyone who calls or takes the bus at a pit fix location, it will be free. If you're going to a polling site and coming back, you will not have to pay. The dollar bus will be free on Election Day, November seventh. Okay. One of the things we got going, um, thanks to the generals of the state and the Senator Gunther, we're gonna get lights, Little League lights on the girls' softball field. Uh, I think it was four, five years ago, uh, the town lights and boys feel, and it was only right that we could feel our lights on the girls' field. So girls will have equal representation with lights, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, that grant came through. And as for the pickleball courts, it's another time coming. People have wanted the pickleball courts. Um, we're probably gonna do a regular time up there and maybe play a game. Everyone says that, you know. One of the things, you know, you mentioned that we do have a restroom up there that's got a lot to sell at seven o'clock. And we also gonna have, um, a canopy. So anybody who is not planning to sit under the canopy when it's hot, so I'm really, I'm looking forward to, uh, pickleball. I think I'm gonna go up there and try to play, uh, pickleball myself. And, you know, I want to thank, uh, the majority of my board who are looking at my vision in regards to the Speed House. Um. Town residents have always been concerned with, um, speeders. And this is a good thing in helping the town with speeding on town roads, so the Speed Humps, we're getting them, gonna order them. And they will be implemented along town roads. Congratulations to all our middle town, mainly varsity football team. Um, um, Wilkins, uh, Ministry of Young, um, men and women who were volunteering during that day and if anyone had a chance to go there that day, that was a great giveaway, a lot going on. And these young men and women were fantastic, stepped up to help. And also to, uh, congratulations to our M M A buddy, um, M M A Academy on two eleven, because again, it's a small business and it's still well, it goes to community. And, uh, like on Bernie Bernard, and, um, he helped a lot with the town. He's helped out, trained up, resourced, and that's happened, so it's good to see. But that's. Our November and December Town Board meetings have been moved. The November meeting will be on November sixteen, at seven thirty, and the December meeting will be on December twenty first, at seven thirty. Um, it's always good, uh, spending up here to look at these young men and women. And I always say, we have to recognize them. We have to let them know that we see their hard work. That is so. So the way we want to reinforce our kids, we need to do it to others. Um, one last thing. Uh, let's say, but don't thank you. Thank you for thinking of the town, giving us money back, um, taxes that I appreciate and do with that. Um, we're gonna go into. But you had comments?
I just, I wanna reinforce what, uh, Council Valiant, my, uh, wish, uh, well wish to help her, Lisa, a speedy recovery. I just, uh, a comment and personal comment is, as a town, I think we're doing great with our kids. We're really fighting forward and we try as a community every day to do what is right. And I think it's a work with the government and with our citizens. We gotta unite for them, because if we don't unite, we don't go forward. So rather than fighting, we should do something to bring us together. Because that is the only way that we teach our kids, that there's hope and there's a future. And if we don't do that, then we're family.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we have the Commissioner.
Thanks, Supervisor, Town Board. Just real quick tonight, the general D P W, some things have been going on. It's been extremely busy, uh, past several months, of course. We talked about paving and wrapping up our annual paving projects and schedules. Um, our town forces, um, put down over thirteen thousand tons of blacktop this year. Um, to put that in perspective, that's six hundred and fifty dump truck loads. Um, we did several miles of roads, um, I'll have, uh, I don't want to steal Councilman Coin's thunder next month. He can, uh, he'll read the list that, uh, that our highway supervisor, Phil Fedon, gave to him. Um, we did over the past month. I was, I missed the last meeting. Um, but we did put, uh, highway supervisor, Bill Fedon, into that position permanently, so I want to thank the town, uh, for that. He had an amazing summary. He's doing a great job. Um, we're asking for your assistance, of course, with roadside garbage going into the fall season. Our winter prep has begun and leaf pickup begins on November first, the infamous leaf pickup. And like I say every year, just remember, they're only leaves. Don't get worked up. They're only leaves. Um, rain, we've had a crazy summer. Um, June, five point eight seven inches, July, ten point four one inches. August, three point eight six inches. Uh, September, year to date, not counting tomorrow, four point three inches. Um, four months, twenty four point four, four inches of rain. That is the total rain amount we typically get a year. Uh, we've had a lot of drainage issues and a lot of the drainage issues are just honestly related to the ground being super fat drained. Uh, we've been checking them all out. We've been addressing them as they came up. But again, this has not been a typical year. If you had a drainage issue, uh, we will get there and look at it, that's for sure. However, um, whether storm is going on, whether rain is coming down, there's absolutely nothing that we can do, um, during the event. Um, but we will get out there. Um, on the water and sewer side, uh, we had our annual inspection from New York State D E C. At our wastewater treatment plant, we operate a four million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant. The guys and ladies down there do a great job. Our annual hydrant flushing will be October sixteenth through twenty ninth. That is on the town website and Facebook page. If you have any questions as to when you're gonna be in our area, just reach out. Uh, great job by J McLintock, of course, in our parks for maintaining all the parks. All the parks are still open. We had a great summer at the Circle Wheel Park, even with all the rain. Um, we had a very big season because when it wasn't raining, it was blistering hot. Um, our aquatic director, Frank Woodward, did an amazing job again out there. Um, he schedules the lifeguards. He takes care of all that. He takes care of their payroll. He collects the money at the beach. Uh, he does a great job. Uh, golf course open for the season, um, going very well, again, even with the rain. Um, as of August, we are actually ahead of our twenty twenty-three rounds. We had a great year out there last year and we expect the same. Um, Steph and Avenue, the pickleball courts, um, take a ride by. They're pretty awesome. They're pretty good. And, uh, I'm waiting to see the Town Board out there and I was gonna say, stay out of my kitchen. If you play pickleball, I guess you know what that means. Um. From the O E M, um, on a serious note, a huge shout out, um, to our O E M team, our town of Walkeville Police Department. Uh, particular our coordinator, Joe Andre, Chief Hartman, Deputy Chief Stan Spano, Lieutenant McLamore, um, as we assisted in the tragic bus accident last Thursday and every day before. Um, it was a seamless operation on a very tragic day. Um, our police, we had actually had police Lieutenant McLamore and another officer that responded to the scene when the all call went out. Uh, we had set up at the Garnet Medical Center as an M C I, which is a mass casualty incident. Um, I believe about eleven or twelve of the students were transferred to Garnet, Garnet. Um, we had a reception area for parents. I know Miguel Rodriguez was here earlier. Um, he is the safety and coordinator of the Garnet and they did an amazing job. And, uh, like I said, a very tragic day was a very seamless operation, so chief, thank you to your men and women and also our O E M team. Um, we had our twenty-second annual nine eleven ceremony and that was held on, um, September eleventh. It was a very nice event. We do a very solemn service. I want to thank everyone who participated. Um, and again, uh, the supervisor is gonna be presenting his budget to the board, I believe, tomorrow, or you had, you gotta turn it in by tomorrow, right?
It goes to the court.
Tomorrow, right. It goes to the board on the chair.
Exactly. So we've been working hard on the budget. Um, we had very good budget meetings this year. They went very well. I want to thank, of course, um, the supervisor, controller, deputy controller, uh, my assistant, Michelle Baker, and all of my D P W foremen and all the town department heads, um, for their assistance through this recent budget process. I think the board is gonna get a very good budget that they're gonna be very happy with, so on that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief Hartman?
I don't lose time, it's expired, but I'm gonna hear about the pickle and kitchen thing next time. Thank you, Supervisor. Um, had a great honor of attending the moving up ceremony, recruiting ceremony with Girl Scouts that was said a couple of weeks ago. Charisse, she does a great job with the Girl Scouts here. The little girls are wonderful. They're so involved with the organization. And no cookies, though, we're hoping the Girl Scouts could protect them. I'll be somebody who loves this one. Um, lately, there's been a lot of press, we're gonna retail thefts, major media, target, particularly a little, had a big social and grocery journal. There's no surprise, also, policing has been going on for about a year and a half, two years now, subsequent to COVID. This is not the typical shoplifting that we hear about, children or someone stealing food. These are organized gangs that come to our town. They're professionals. They come in and they steal merchandise, large scale. That's the merchandise. They come in five, six, seven times at a time and what happens is it acts as a distraction for security forces who are unable to identify and follow the five, six, seven people who didn't store at one time, vacation, that they leave as quickly as they came in. The issue we're facing, seeking cooperation is not providing merchandise, um, that's suspect being stolen. When someone comes up to you and offers you something in the parking lot, the deal just to the future probably is because it's probably stolen. Happens all the time. There are people in our town, coming to our town, they're on their way to home, people are buying, uh, tools and they're buying stolen merchandise in, out of somebody's trunk in the parking lot. Please, uh, when you see somebody selling something in the parking lot, please call us right away. The other component of that is apparently lots, uh, amount of the merchandise being moved from Amazon and others. So retail theft organization entities which are working with major retailers in a country targeted by some, or on others, are going to put the pressure on now. You know, I don't, that is all, that's right, so, uh, please be aware of this going on. We've been aware of it. The forum that's coming up, a credit, Brian Davis and Debra for February, we're gonna have a community council posting this. It's gonna be a wonderful event next Thursday night. It's gonna be a great panel discussion on this issue. Subsequent to COVID, we are seeing more people in, A, suffering from extreme mental health crisis. Um, some are related to opioid addiction and other issues. And then we're seeing an increase in cases, which are not clear-cut mental health issues, but they're overwhelming cases. And this is the thrust of the problem. When we show up in a situation where someone's in clear dire need of a mental health, uh, treatment, we were able to remove that person to the capable health unit at Garnet and we get immediate treatment. In contrast to that, there's another group, there's people who call us on a fairly regular basis who are suffering from some sort of illusions. And it's not enough, we don't have enough under the authority law to remove them for treatment. These are the cases where we don't have the resources and we don't have the professional training to help these people. We just respond day after day, people's residents and their businesses and, and try and help them the best we can. But we did receive a grant, um, with help of the county and I have to give Sergeant Mike Ronaldo, thank you, Council Down, for the, for the Sergeant Mike Ronaldo program together. He was approached, um, with this idea and the one who pushed this program through. So now we have two practitioners with the department, full-time, that respond to these calls with our police officers. And they're catching these cases, they're handling these incidents where people are in this gray area, where they're not signed up to move into hospital, but they clearly need help. We don't have the resources to help them. Now we do. Now there's a team full-time that's able to deal with these, these, these group of individuals. And trust, they need the help. It was so great to have this program. Once again, credit to Debra and, and, um, Brian and the rest of the community council putting this forum together. It's a great group of professionals. We have to address this issue on town. Because we see Kate, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cases on a regular basis, um, going through our, our whole center where people are desperate to need help. And we just haven't had the resources and now we do. So it's gonna be great discussion and move forward to a significant number of people attending. We look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a hundred participation, three minutes. State your name, where you live. We'll start with Zoom. Anyone else doing? Anyone in the audience? Right up, right?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is David Hoplin. I'm a, a high school senior at Milltown High School. I'm currently a life scout in troop thirty-seven in Pine Bush, New York. Um, working hard on obtaining, on obtaining my Eagle Scout rank, uh, and that's what breaks me here tonight. Uh, every scout must complete a project that is value-added to the beneficiary. In my case, these people are the people of the town of Walkeville. I'm proposing to build a monument to service dogs for our military, government, and law enforcement. This monument will honor the sacrifice of all the handlers and canine officers slash soldiers that have been lost in the line of duty. I propose this monument, North Street, oh, hold on, I propose this monument, uh, reconstructed in the Small Memorial Park, uh, at the intersection of Highland Avenue, North Street, and Sand Station Road. This monument will be six foot by ten foot, broken up into a central thirty-six inch wide sidewalk built to eighty-eight specifications to allow for wheelchair traffic. It'll have one eighteen inch wide alley on each side. On the left, powder coated boot prints will be set into the concrete. On the right, powder coated paw prints will be also set in the concrete. Uh, these prints will mirror each other and walk to the end of the monument where they will turn and face the center headstone. Uh, this will be a concrete marble or granite mount with a plaque reading, "To all the dogs and their handlers, we thank you for your service and all you have done for your country." I feel that this will provide a much-needed, uh, acknowledgement of these officers slash soldiers, as I am unaware of any similar monument in our area. I feel the project, uh, I feel like the project as designed will add beauty to an already beautiful park. Further, I have already enlisted the help staff, Staff Sergeant Sean Lynn of the New York Army National Guard, uh, eleven fifty-sixth Combat Engineers, and John Ragliano of American Shore as guides and sponsors. I'm ready to begin fundraising and I've already planned most of this project. I look forward to discussing it further with all of you at your earliest convenience, as this project must be approved and completed before my eighteenth birthday, which is February fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Where do I sign?
I have a couple of, of folders for each of you guys up here.
Yeah. How much would this cost?
Um, we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at about the twelve hundred to two brand range. Um, most of it will be taken care of all donations from the two guys. Um. As well as, uh, as fundraising efforts by our true. And you, and you.
Supervisor. Do you want to make a budget or approve this project?
Yes.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's get together.
When we bring the young man into a work session?
Well, I want to go down to the park with him and, and, you know, white marks stuff, you know, because we do have, uh, plans for an additional monument there. I want to make sure that both are able to, uh, fit in that, that spot that's, we don't have a lot of space remaining. Can't help, it's going up fast, so, um. You gonna hang out until the end?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be.
Okay.
Getting done? Is that due for a pitch coming?
I know. Listen, we'll meet this weekend. You know what I mean? So hang out till the end.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
And it has to be done and installed by your birthday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I'll put time for it anymore.
I know what that means. I miss you.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, uh, awesome project. Um, in my tenure as a commissioner, I worked with two Eagle Scout projects and I have to apologize. Um in my tenure as a commissioner, I worked with two Eagle Scout projects, and I have to apologize one hundred percent. One. The Girl Scouts have a Liberty Award, maybe something similar, oh, that's the Girl Scouts, so Charisse doesn't kill me. But anyway, we had also had a young lady that did her uh. The comparable to an Eagle Scout in the Girl Scouts, um so we've done two Eagle Scout projects in the town. Um already, like I said, the past ten years, this sounds like an amazing project, and um yeah, definitely we're on board.
Yes, very good.
Can you jump in one more?
Absolutely.
So, you guys said, Neil, you can, you can take my car now, I'm sure we're getting the F L P to shields, totally to support this, this K nine will get support.
That's great, great job. Thank you, good luck. One on Zoom?
Other positive for my audience.
Anyone on in the audience?
I'm the one who needs like twenty-one years, so I'm not sure. Three minute timer, or is it somewhere, right?
I'll let you know.
I was gonna actually.
Straight, state your name and your address.
My address, meaning where I live?
Yes.
You don't need to, it's okay, just the name.
Okay.
I have enough people. Uh my name. Neil, I love my life, Mitch Hinton, my name, my phone number is Rachel One Blower Hinton. Online, that's me. Now. I'm on, my issue is safety here at the time. And I used to be a uh special agent. Um super, I'm sorry, and I found reports there. And two years later, they're just getting works in the internet. It took two years, now I put all the stuff online, it's all over, and I made complaints. And it's still the same issue, you go online, and you see even online the same reviews. And then, the thing is too, I just run over Hart and Coos the other day, same thing, make a report. About a few days, I know it takes some time, but maybe, you know, what it looks like, it's just, uh it's to me. Uh maybe I think it's a big issue, but I don't see like no lines around it, the guns are hanging out there, everything's online, you guys know. All this stuff here, because uh I can get told online by everybody. The second issue with that, after that, is um. Uh being blocked by people, politicians that aren't supposed to be blocked, yourself. And a whole bunch of other people online, like I said, all that's online. Now, you know, first, mom, it's a big deal for me, and um I have people actually out there. Saying I'm a pedophile because of uh one of the the kids uh Elias. On uh sort of a public committee, you know, I'm talking, you guys all know this stuff out there, and the thing is that. You know, has to respect, you know, I respect people, when I ran for mayor, I made a comment on uh, may may drop two thousand dollars. I made a comment, respect, you get it, you get it, no respect, it's nobody matters, respect to you. Now, here we go. So I have no respect for people who do this, doing this here to me, that's what I do, go to a lawyer, go to uh civil liberties union, this is nonsense. Myself and Neil's picture have been online just the same, and I'm thinking, I can't say who it is, but. It's a town Walkeville troops, you all know who it is, you can't even put uh anything online here. To make any comments for you guys, so what do you guys hide? That's what I'm thinking, I don't know what you guys are hiding, that you you can't even let us uh make comments. So of course, I went to the back door, I went to the pictures, and and made comments, and that's, that's. Devious thing, but that's the extent I have to go to, right, so I got there, one minute, okay, fifteen seconds. All right, good, so um. Where I didn't see any go, any, it's here. Okay, but basically that's about, that that's it, I I don't see anything is done, years ago, I was in, um I worked at Rainbow Mountain. I followed the report there, with the building inspector and OSHA. Within weeks, it was done, place is done, I went back there six years later, beautiful place. Super eight over there, he owns all three of them. There's also Hampton Inn, another place I worked there, they hide it mold behind um. Behind wallpaper, I know for a fact, I've seen it and I've been told that. I could put all this online stuff and no hats, over the head. So how can I not say that people that look, look away and don't do anything about stuff when they see it's wrong, are criminals?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Um I guess if I question the department of public works. In front of my house, I have two potholes, they're quite deep, and um. I'm just wondering, I I contacted Eric Johnson, since he's been helping you. Okay, so do you wanna see this? I mean, I'd like to, I can still.
Yeah, you don't have to give me your address, but yeah.
That's it, thank you very much.
Uh this salad wire up, actually, we have some good news also for Lorelei Drive and uh Mermaid and all that residents out there. Uh we are in the process of putting a generator in for the water system, because I know we've had problems out there when the power goes out, you have no water, because it's on a community well. Um so the generator is in, we're just waiting for the electrician to throw in the transfer switch, so hopefully going forward, uh. And I will give credit to Council Johnson, although he's not here, um but we did utilize some of our ARPA funding. And we put a brand new generator in it, Lorelei, so when the power goes out, you will have water. Yes, thank you.
On Zoom? The audience?